My next one session deals with two issues. We have an hour, so let's be conscious of our time constraints, although I don't think we should be too much of a...
No.
First is, we've had discussions regarding the adoption of regulations for scooters, so I provide you with an excerpt from the state statute, ordinances from a couple of cities who have adopted these regulations. You'll notice they call them different things. Crystal City calls them pocket bikes and Cape Girardeau calls them motorized bicycles. But they're kind of examples of what the lay of the land is for regulations. The issues are, you tell me what the issues are. I think we've talked about, the age issue is you've got to be a licensed driver, and so that's not really an issue. So the question then is head protection. Do you want to require helmets?
I do. I own a scooter and you probably...
I've seen your helmet.
Yeah, you can't probably say you see me twice on the streets without it.
Passenger, operator and passenger, if we allow passengers.
Well, some of these didn't allow for passengers.
That's right, we'll get to that point.
Passengers is a question mark because I've seen some of these were, they weren't allowed passengers.
I seen a young girl the other day with a toddler on the front of her scooter.
Those are the ones that get me because that isn't even a little bit safe.
So let's say, let's start with the age of an operator in order to have a passenger.
If the vehicle's designed for a passenger, then, you know, but some of those are not designed to carry passengers at all.
No, no, Martin, I don't.
Right. I don't think they are either.
I don't think they are.
Mine's got the feet props that you put, somebody on there, put their feet up there.
So that's a seat and feet props.
What if you just want to sit back? I mean, I, you know, these things are operating on city streets. They need to be treated like a motorized vehicle, not a toy. I mean, that's the...
Chief, you probably ought to be coming up and involving in this discussion, I would believe. You have to enforce all this, and you see more of these on the streets, you and your men, than these guys apparently, they don't have jobs because they see a lot of them.
I don't care what he says.
Well, typically what we see, people with passengers are younger kids that have younger kid passengers, high school kids or whatever. I mean, I'm certainly not going to generalize and say that no adult has their kid. I've seen adults with their small children on there, you know, which seems problematic, and I would hope that this ordinance would cover any small, minor children, but I don't know that that's been proposed.
Well, that's what we're talking about. You can't control the age of operations because that's a state statute, but the state doesn't address passengers. One of the things that's been suggested is that you decide from having a properly equipped vehicle for passenger, and I've seen that defined as a seat and footrest, that the operator be above a certain age before they're allowed to have a passenger. And that age could be 18. Pick an age.
My only question to that is, that's hard to decide who's 18, who's not, and that's a difficult. I think, I think we either go with passengers or not. I think that's the easiest to enforce. It's going to eliminate, you know, most people, you know, who are you seeing with these kids on there? I think you, I think you almost have to because you'll never ever be able to enforce it. What good is it if we can't enforce it? And we have problems. So I think really, it should be one person at a time on the scooter.
No passenger.
No passengers.
I agree.
So why is the wording so important here? Motorized bicycle, pocket bike?
I think we're going to define scooter as being the state definition of below 50 cc's. There is a definition.
So can't we name them all in one ordinance and say them?
Sure. No, we wouldn't just say...
Because the problem, if you set a rule, somebody's going to find another way around. If somebody's going to make something or something, but the end result still the same.
So we'll, we'll pick a term, scooter, and then we'll put otherwise known as...
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
A scooter is defined as...
Right, that'll be in the definitions section.
Right.
All right, so we're defining a scooter and we're going to name all the other permutations of that. We're going to require helmets, and we're not going to, we're not going to allow passengers, is what I've gotten so far.
What about helmets? What, you talking about a regular motorcycle helmet? Are you talking about a bicycle helmet? You see them running around, riding around out there with the bike helmet on, on the scooter.
I would say that'd be the minimum.
I'd say as long as they have a helmet on.
I think you ought to let it up to them once they're 18. That's just my opinion.
Whether to wear a helmet or not?
I tend towards, towards that as well.
I think, I think you still have that debate in many states. In Illinois, you don't have to have a helmet. I think if, I think they're old enough to make that decision at that point, if they're 18, then...
Except we don't, you can, you can get an operator scooter at the age of 16, can't you?
Right, but I'm saying maybe make it that, once you have your full driver's license, tie it to...
You only get your full driver's license at 18, right?
Right. I would, I would tie it to that. I mean, that's just...
So we're going to require them to have their full driver's license before they operate a scooter?
No. Before they operate a scooter without a helmet?
Without a helmet.
Maybe, is what we're saying.
Maybe.
Yeah, maybe.
We're still requiring motorcycles to have a helmet. I want to go back to my earlier comment. These are operating on streets, they're with traffic, people can pull out in front of them, just like they can a motorcycle, a car, anything else. The whole injury thing is just practical within as it is.
I agree with him.
You know, we need...
I agree that it's best practice to wear a helmet. I don't think it's necessarily our business to tell an adult to wear a helmet.
I agree.
Well, now wait a minute.
I'm 63 years old almost, and I wear a helmet. I'm under the shank down there.
And I think that's great. You should, you should.
I'm like, Bob, I think everybody should.
Again, on the enforcement issue.
Well, I'll have to wear a seatbelt.
How are you going to enforce that? How are you going to tell the kid 16, 18?
It would be a supplemental, you know, if you have some other reason to stop them, I don't know whether you want to get in the practice of, unless it's somebody that you know, you know, personally or professionally that is under the age of 18, I would say that's probably not going to be a primary stop for us. But if, if we run into them for some other traffic reason and inquire and find out that they're not, then that's the additional avenue that our officers would have for enforcement.
I just, I just think that ought to be somebody's right if they want to or not.
Are you saying 18 is the only age, or can we say 20, or?
And what defines responsibility? Some things you're not considered responsible, 17, 18, 21. If you're under, if the parents claim you're on your taxes, it's 24. I mean, what determines legal responsibility? And with that, what about the liability insurance on these? I know Frank has said before that it falls under their homeowner's insurance. What if they don't have it? You know, they're renters or whatever.
That's not our problem. That's, that's not our problem.
It is if they hit your vehicle.
Well, it is if they have a helmet on.
Well, I mean, if I'm required to have liability insurance for my car or even my motorcycle, why, and they're on the same city streets as we are.
The only way...
But this is a, this is a, I think a helmet thing is much more personal.
We're talking about a helmet issue right now. The insurance issue is a good point to bring up.
It is.
But we're talking about a helmet issue.
But a helmet thing, yeah.
And the only, you know, when you ride, when you ride a motorcycle in the state of Missouri, you have to wear a helmet. Is that correct?
That's a statement.
Now, that could change, so I don't see where it should be.
Well, by eliminating passengers, it clears up one problem. Because my biggest problem is people holding infants on their lap and riding down the street. You take that out of the equation, then the helmet thing, I can almost kind of go along with, should you? Yeah. But do we really need to regulate common sense? I don't know. Of course, we are to a degree, but, you know, I can see both sides of that.
You know, I ask again, the 18, how'd you come up with that age? Is that just...
I was just thinking, well, there was a good...
Voting age, it's...
Voting age, it's, it's when you get your full driver's license.
You can, you can be shipped to Iraq to fight for our country.
I understand that very well.
But you can't pass here.
Right. Well, that's another.
Right.
But still considered under the law until 15 or something, so.
Okay.
All right, so where are we falling on this? Kind of split.
I think 18 is appropriate.
I'm definitely in the no passenger camp.
Yes, absolutely. We're going to make that, we're going to have that problem.
That's going to eliminate half of people riding scooters.
And I'm definitely in favor of everyone wearing a helmet.
I am too.
I just think it's, too many people are...
Let's pull everybody on a helmet, no helmet. All of us in favor of a helmet?
A helmet for everybody?
Raise your hand. Helmet for everybody. That's four.
Well, you got what you're...
No, I, I'm, I can see both sides of it. So I'm, I'm going to err on the side of no helmet.
Okay, well, that's what the vote was.
Yeah.
So it would be four and four, right?
Right, with his...
Wait a minute, I voted, so I can't vote on that.
I didn't count you.
You didn't count me.
Okay. Well, what's the vote again?
Four are in favor of helmets at all times, four are in favor of helmets some of the time, which is for some ages.
For some ages, or?
Until you have your full driver's license.
18 or over.
You have to wear a helmet.
Well, if it's a tie, or we're not sure, you're the one that's going to have to deal with it.
No.
Well, the mayor's the...
Well, I know, but I mean, you're input as well, I mean...
I don't disagree in that, in that it's a motorized vehicle that's on the city streets, the same as a motorcycle, you're still doing 30 miles an hour, you can still get a substantial head injury from a, from a vehicle collision, and it's, I mean, if we're going to err on the side of...
That's what it's all about, isn't it?
But that's all, should you have the right to take that risk?
Well, the state has already made that for motorcycles. I don't think it's, it's a ridiculous request to...
At least, at least on motorcycles.
What's a ridiculous request?
I, I don't think it's ridiculous to say that, you know, it's not like we're telling them that they have to have...
I just, I just...
Bubble wrap around them.
Just constantly have the fear of someone getting hurt really bad and not being able to get out of hospital bed the rest of their life, or not being able to get out of a wheelchair because you didn't have a helmet on.
Cigarettes, cigarettes kill more people in the state of Missouri than...
We're not talking about cigarettes.
But I mean, if we're going to try to protect people from themselves, then let's ban cigarettes. That'll save more lives in Missouri than the helmet law will.
Let's draw, let's draw back to what the issue is. And I understand your point there, so.
But Eric, on the other side of your point, the state of Missouri has also said scooters, your scooters don't have to have that.
Exactly, exactly.
I wasn't aware of that, okay.
Well, they just, they don't regulate. It's not a safety. It's a affirmative statement. It's okay not to wear your helmet.
So that's just left into the municipality's hands?
Well, we don't have to regulate. This is one of those deals where we can choose to adopt regulations that are more strict than the state, and that's what you're talking about tonight.
Let me throw something else out there that might be... There are, I'll call them toy vehicles. These, I don't even know how they work, but you, you stand on it and it's got two wheels. It's motorized with electric...
Like a Segway.
Segway, yeah. But they make them, remember the ones that are catching fire?
Hoverboards.
Hoverboard, okay. I don't think they have any with one wheel yet. I don't have a motorized unicycle that I know of. But what you're really talking about is everything that, that comes within the definition of a motorized bicycle. And that's where the scooter, the scooters come in, because they don't, they can't, so they're under 50 cc's and are supposed to be under a certain amount of horsepower, which we can't hardly measure. We don't have the equipment to measure it, and unable or not designed to go over 30 miles an hour. Okay? So under that, the hoverboards, we've had issues with these little bitty, I don't know what you call them, mini bikes?
Ped bikes, the other type of motorcycle.
And some of those are like racing things. They're, they're very fast. We don't ever measure their horsepower.
Pocket bikes.
Pocket bikes.
I don't think you see them as much anymore. I haven't seen them there.
No, I haven't, I haven't. But understand that when you, when you regulate all this stuff, you're regulating under the state definition of a motorized bicycle, which includes anything with two or three wheels that has a motor. So we always carve out the exception for the folks that use these three-wheelers for handicap purposes. We give them a pass if they have a medical prescription. But in Missouri, we don't have a scooter, we don't have scooter ordinance. These are the old, remember the old classic mopeds where you'd actually have a motorized bicycle? But scooters fall within that definition. So you're regulating all of these things. So if you said helmets, you're saying that someone on a moped, a bicycle with pedals, would have to wear a helmet? Well, I don't, I don't think that's a bad idea. I'm just saying that that's what you regulate. And probably the, the hover...
Hoverboards.
Hoverboard.
Those aren't suitable for...
Street use, yeah, I think those are...
They're not on the streets.
Those are guys falling off of them in their living rooms usually as well.
I have seen, I have seen a guy on the street.
On a hoverboard?
Yeah, he works, works for the city.
Okay.
Not the city, the lights.
And so your existing scooter ordinance is actually what we're talking about amending by adding some additional requirements. Some cities are requiring insurance, but not the, the kind of insurance that you have to have for a motorcycle or a car is liability. It doesn't cover the injury to the operator.
Problem with insurance is now we're going to have to have a register in order to demonstrate insurance.
Oh, well, you're going to have to have some kind of registration process, and probably a sticker or a decal or something that we've started doing for golf carts, but we've never done for scooters.
Well, we haven't talked about registration, but I mean, we, we adopted insurance requirement.
And then that would be a situation where it has to be displayed in a way that a police officer could look at it and say, hey, there's, there's no, we have to say it has to be fixed at a certain point where it's clearly visible to law enforcement.
There again, I mean, what, what would be the benefit to requiring a registration of that as opposed to stopping them and them not having insurance at the time of stop?
Well, you'd have a right to stop them without probable cause if you could see that there's no sticker affixed at the location required without waiting for them to, you know, drive radically or have an accident. It would make enforcement a little easier. You know, you don't have to stop everybody that you don't see a sticker on. It would give you the right to stop.
But there again, if, if somebody hit somebody and we're working the accident and they don't have the insurance, it would be the same as any other vehicle that's involved in an accident doesn't have insurance. I mean, it's...
Well, the state doesn't require them to have insurance.
Right. But we, but we would be requiring them to have insurance.
In order to get the sticker.
I'm questioning why the sticker's necessary as opposed to just a retroactive, if we stop them and they don't...
Just a statement saying insurance has to, in certain limits, is required, and if something happens and we determine that you didn't have the insurance, it's a citation.
Correct.
Insurance is a little wobbly if you think about it. If you're going, if you're only going 25 miles an hour, I guess if you hit a car on the side, you put a pretty good dent in it. But beyond that, it's going to be the injuries to the operator.
Well, the thing with the sticker is then they're going to have to update it at all times, and how do you know that they still have valid insurance? They could have it for a day or a week, and then cancel their policy or whatever, and they're riding around with a sticker. I think Eric's idea is probably more, a simpler way to achieve the same thing.
And I think we're back to where we, our, our initial problem was with people as riders, right?
Correct.
And then we had last, the maiden I had been, we brought up about helmets. Those are the two issues we want to deal with, right? We just introduced insurance and stickers and stuff like that. I think for time's sake, we need to just decide on those two and move forward.
See how it goes, and if we need to revisit it, we can.
Well, we were, we were four, four, I think, on the helmet.
Are we still, on the helmet issue, are we still four and four?
What I'm proposing is that you have an alderman who will sponsor the ordinance and another alderman who will sort of co-sponsor it, and they'll get it on the floor. And then when you vote on it, if it's four, four, you break the tie.
Well, but I got to write the ordinance. So right now, we're deciding what, what's going to be in the ordinance.
Are we going to do 18 when they have a full license, 21, or?
Well, if they sponsor the ordinance, we have a voice in whether it's helmet or no helmet. If you're going to sponsor it and you, and you want helmets, or if you want to sponsor a counter ordinance that says no helmets, you could have two.
Yeah, but you'd only need one, though.
You'd only need one.
Right, because you can vote it down if you don't like it.
That's just kicking a decision down the road.
Right. Well, this, who's it, who wants to sponsor it? What do you want in it?
I'll sponsor it if you have to wear a helmet. I wear mine, so...
I'll second that sponsor.
By their own safety, though. I've had some close calls that weren't my fault, but, you know.
And again, I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea for people to wear helmets. I think they should. I'm just not convinced that it's our job to tell them that they have to. It's a philosophical...
Like seat belts.
Government, well, I'm not, it's the government's job to do that either.
I agree. But then what does it do? What do seat belts do? What do helmets do?
Well, sure, they save lives.
And I agree, I agree.
So, so does banning cigarettes.
I agree.
But we're not doing that.
And alcohol, if we're going there.
True.
Yeah.
As eating at McDonald's.
Yeah.
It goes.
But this is an issue we have on our streets. We identified as a problem, we need to deal with it and go forward.
Do we tag golf carts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we should tag.
So why should we tag scooters?
Do they, do they pay a registration fee?
Yeah.
If it's a minimal fee?
About 15 bucks.
I think we should tag scooters too, then, just as a way to make sure everybody's on the same playing field.
There's five golf carts in town. There's going to be hundreds of scooters. I mean, it's going to be an administrative issue. If that's what the board wants, obviously that's what we'll do.
Do they, would they...
It'll be an easier process than the golf cart inspection.
Come into city hall to, to buy a tag?
The golf cart, after, after...
We have a set of requirements for what, how a golf cart must be outfitted in order to get the sticker. And so we have to inspect it before we issue the sticker.
Right. These are, scooters are generally outfitted for street use in, from the get-go.
Here, we're really not talking about the equipment. We're talking about headgear, insurance, age, not things, not things we would...
There's several more scooters than golf carts.
To determine in order to issue the sticker.
I mean, a hundred, I...
I'd say that's probably...
I'd say it's close.
Is it really?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot.
So the, I think, the, the sponsors are saying that the helmet for everyone is what they want, so I think that's what you put in.
Right.
So then what's the next bit about this?
Right here.
I really don't have much else to discuss.
So are we requiring permits?
We're not going to talk about the...
Passengers?
Passengers, no.
Passengers is the biggie.
No passengers.
No passengers.
Do you see these on, on scooters?
I'm sorry.
Because if you've got a young kid, you're only hand, one hand on the handlebar, so...
But what we have is, we find a scooter, basically following the state statute, we're going to call it a scooter and we're going to put otherwise known as...
All that.
...better than...
So you're going to, you're going to be regulating motorized bicycles?
Right. Oh, that's what the state calls them.
That's the only thing you can. There is no, there is no other definition.
Otherwise known as scooters or pocket bikes or...
There's one more thing. It's supposed to be an automatic transmission. So some of these pocket bikes, I think, do shift. So they, they would not be allowed under...
It's a two or three vehicle with an automatic transmission and a motor with a cylinder capacity of nothing but 50 cc's. It produces less than three gross brake horsepower and is capable of accelerating at a maximum speed of 30.
What is that three brake horsepower?
Didn't one of them in here have a seat height, which would, I mean, I think one of them had a seat height, which would, those little, that was the concern on the pocket bikes, where they're too low, you can't see them.
So no pocket bikes is what you're thinking? Well, they fall within the definition. I don't know if the pocket bikes shift or not.
They sound, we had, when I lived up in, in the city, we had a lot of them around in our neighborhood, and it sounded like they were shifting to me. I mean, they're pretty loud. Those things are loud and fast and...
They love to hit ground.
Yeah, very, yeah, small.
You know, they don't leave you on the...
I was going to include things that we don't talk about, remember, like the braking capacity, where you're going to be able to stop at 25.
But if, if you do all that, then you're going to have to go through some kind of safety thing. You're going to have to have a police officer there to make sure it's going to happen, and then you get into a lot of things.
Well, again, Eric said, it's in somewhere that'll stop you forward, but if we, if you have an incident and your brakes weren't working, then that would be, that would be an issue, that would be a violation.
We could just require a safety inspection.
Every year?
As, I mean, I guess since you're not registering.
They're not registered, but it's not...
Only you're going to stop, you're going to get them by speed.
Right, yeah, if they're doing a...
Or an accident.
Level ground.
Come on, go faster than 30.
They're supposed to, they're supposed to be regulated at 50. If it's, if it's truly a 50 cc on level ground, it's not supposed to go over 30.
The two I had couldn't make it over 20.
Yeah.
They just wouldn't go.
With the load.
Of course, I paid $200 a piece for them, yeah.
There's some guys that did.
I think, I think if I'm by one, it's not going to go over 10. Taking the high road.
A thousand bucks or two on that end, so.
Come on, man. Are we ready to move on to the roads?
I'm ready, yes.
I'm ready. I write an ordinance. County wants to do this.
Write an ordinance on the roads?
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, we, we think we have approximately $200,000 we can spend on roads out of various... Eric, you need to come forward now. Get our bridge and road contribution from the county. He has a budget. He's been doing very well. His budget. We don't allocate out of the general fund, road money, until we have to see how the income comes, but it always pushes us into the middle of summer. And that's where we are right now, so we need to make a decision if we're going to get roadwork done, we can start the process. You have the list of roads that was distributed. Some of you have gone out and about looking at them. I wrote at the top of this, kind of what, what kind of bang you can get for your buck depending on what you do, based on our experience and some more recent experience with work that's been done in St. Genevieve County. So the concrete is going to cost you in the order of $71 a square foot to remove and replace concrete with curbs, those rolled curbs. And that's based on our last concrete job, which was point base. The three-inch asphalt overlay, which is what happened on West Market, we bid it by the ton, or it's bid by the ton, but the ton converts to square feet, and it's about $94 a square foot for a three-inch overlay.
It's $94 or $90?
And I wore cents, square foot.
$94 cents, okay.
With a three-inch overlay. And that's no major base preparation. There's something called wedging, which just kind of smoothes out the surface, and it is a wedge, and it's fixed, and it goes through and knocks down the high points. But the other thing that you, that you do is mill it, which is, tears it up and gives you extra depth for the asphalt. That, that wasn't done in the case, in the project that the wedging was done, but the milling wasn't done at the 94 square foot.
So you don't get milling at 94.
Yeah, I don't have for remove and replace, but you know, you're going to, basic experience says if you're going to remove an asphalt street, you're probably not going to replace it with asphalt, because we have been generally replacing with concrete. But we can remove and replace with asphalt, in which case, you know, you're almost doubling the, the costs in, of that project. So you'd be looking at probably a dollar 70 or so a square foot for removing and replacing with asphalt. You're not going to replace it with three inches, so that'll even drop it up.
Plus, you're probably going to be based too.
Yeah. So I, you know, every time we do this, we come to the conclusion, that's kind of silly to do asphalt when you can do concrete for them at the same price.
Martin, you're, you're saying concrete's $70 a square foot, and asphalt tearing out, replacing is $2 a square foot?
No, not tearing out, oh, yeah. Well, no, forget that, $2 a square foot. Going to have to do this. This is, if you only did it at three, three inches, it would be that, but you're not going to do three inches with asphalt.
Okay, if you did six inches, you'd be $4 a square foot.
Okay, if you did six inches, you'd be four dollars a square. Something, something still weighs off.
Well, then you're gonna have the base, the removal and the base. Well, I think it's gonna come to close to the seven. Well, not gonna come to close to seventy.
It's seventy to, seventy dollars is seventy compared to five dollars?
Yeah, or even ten or fifteen.
Is it fifty-five dollars each one?
For the asphalt.
Yeah, that's.
I took the, well, I mean, that was the bid that, that. They spent seventy-two thousand dollars doing market speed. We divided the seventy-two thousand into the square, the square footage into the seventy-two thousand, and it came out to that ninety-four cents a square foot.
Is that just a three-inch overlay?
That's a three-inch overlay.
So when we were doing Portis and Pine, and we were comparing concrete to asphalt. Curbs and gutters and all that, but just the surface, I thought we were, we were a whole lot closer together.
I agree.
Yeah. We're, we're way, we're way up. Close at all.
Cost a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty, I said five dollars, thousand dollars on Port, on, on, uh, Porter Street. And we did a twenty-one hundred and sixty-two lineal feet. Oh, that's what, never mind. It's a lineal foot, not square foot. Seventy dollars.
So by lineal feet, you mean the width of the street, so many feet?
Yeah, I mean, just.
Right, but you still have to have a width factor.
Right, in, in order to make it a square foot, you'd have to multiply it by three.
Okay.
More feet.
So what does that come to?
A hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And it was two thousand one hundred and sixty-five square feet. So seventy-two dollars.
So this is lineal feet?
Not a square.
Not a lineal.
What's the standard?
Two hundred and fourteen dollars a square foot.
They give a square for.
Concrete.
How much a square foot?
Two hundred and fourteen.
That seems high.
You're going two hour.
Yeah.
That's what I'm wondering, bud?
Two hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Martin.
Divided by.
Martin.
Yeah.
Before we go any further on this, you wanna stop on this and talk to someone before, we'll meet next week with this?
We can.
Yeah.
He said how long it was, it's.
You know, we're not getting anywhere with this.
Forget, forget the dollars. Talk about condition of the streets.
Right, right. We're guessing of the dollars right now.
The only problem I see with your assessment and stuff here is, one, it doesn't take anything into consideration like the amount of traffic. You know, whether it's a through street or not, I mean, all of those are just as important as the condition. If it's a dead-end street, but not much traffic, I mean.
Well, yeah, but they should be afforded, the property owners should be afforded the same street that anyone else's.
I agree.
And I know what you're saying, Martin.
Right, but the more traffic.
The importance of the streets is really the policy decision.
Right.
I mean, that's kind of what the board does. You say, if you think Four Street, because of its traffic and its role in handling the, you know, is more important than.
Grass street.
Uh, Parkwood.
Right.
Then, and we have to choose between doing that or doing Parkwood. Then, that's what you decide.
And maybe on those one-block streets or whatever, maybe overlaying.
Right.
Uh, Four Street's on there at a couple of places.
But the Duracell, we got that as.
I think we just need to add a couple of columns on here. The rate of miss traffic and, you know, population on the street.
I'd like to rate them as traffic. I'd also like to rate them what the price is going to be to do that street.
Right.
In both, either asphalt or concrete.
When you take into consideration.
For every street?
No, not for every, for ones that we.
Let's decide, yeah, which ones, and we'll get further information on, on those.
When you take into consideration as far as doing streets and stuff, what, I mean, what about as far as the underground utilities and?
That's my bigger question. You don't wanna pave a street that you gotta turn sewer up.
Yeah.
We had that issue down on Third Street. I talked to a business, they, they did a, they fixed the street, they put new curbs in, and it's got curbing. It's got about a lip like this down the street. It's a trip hazard. There's a, it's traffic area because it's right in the downtown. It's between Third and, it's the Third Street between Gaborian Market and, and it.
We inspected that storm sewer, and we think it doesn't have to be taken out.
Good. See, now, that's a perfect street for an overlay to get it right even and.
Yeah, 'cause the street's here and then there's a lip.
Yeah, and it's got people walking across the street. It's a trip hazard, and those are, that's for me. And I wouldn't imagine downtown, it's a pretty high-traffic area and on looking unsafe.
Is that street rated Great River Roads? That one block, was that not part of the Great River Roads?
Probably personally, yeah. They probably paid for those sidewalks when they redid the building, put the curbs in.
But the street.
But they didn't, they couldn't do the street 'cause that was City Street.
But. I'm totally understood the city would then do it at some point in the near future, and it didn't get done.
So is this our only two options, concrete or three-inch overlay? What happened to the chip and seal?
That's a surface, generally considered a surface preservation activity.
Yeah, that track record where that wasn't.
It didn't.
Yeah, and the only, the only thing you can chip and seal, you don't, you don't fix anything. You just cover it.
That's what they did, that's what they did out here. Remember, remember how it failed?
Yeah, well, there was no chip to it.
Yeah, this was a slurry seal.
Slurry seal.
Okay, all right.
But when they do that.
But with chip and seal, you're just going over what's there. You're not taking any gips out.
Smoothing anything out.
Preserving the surface, keep the water from getting through. And with these figures, I don't know that chip and seal is that much less than.
Price of, the price of, of asphalt has gone down recently. It's, it's pretty reasonable.
Probably 'cause the toll is going down.
Huh? Price of oil, yeah.
Yeah.
It basically gets reflected in the products.
Well, I went, I went out driving around today and, and looked at some places, and there, there are some things that are marked on here that are, are marked, you know, real low numbers. But then you look and it's a, it's a dead-end street at the back of something, you know.
Right.
But there's some, there's some major thoroughfares, I think, that need more immediate attention. Yeah, sure, I agree. Everybody should have access to great roads, but realistically, with the money that we have, where's it gonna be best spent to benefit the most?
But I'm also saying.
People of the community.
Another thing I think to interject in that is what streets you can save too.
True.
With an overlay. Like, one of them, I went, I went with Dean Bowman yesterday. We rode around and looked at some. I was under the impression, once they got to a certain point with alligator cracking, that they need to be replaced. I took him out to LaFleur Street, which is rated a two on there and needs to be replaced. And he says that's a prime candidate street for an overlay. He said, you know, a size street like that could just be a two-inch overlay.
Cause the traffic isn't that bad.
Mm-hmm. He said there's no base failure under it. It's just cracking. You know, there's no rutting, there's no pumping mud up. He said, you know, that's a prime candidate there for an overlay.
Did, while you had him out, Gary, did you look at the other, like Mary Ellen and the other dead-end streets? Did you happen to look at?
Mary Ellen would be in the same, same case right there.
And what's the other one? Uh, Moro Street? Is that right, Moro Street?
No, we didn't go, we didn't go to Moro.
Okay. Uh, where's he, there's another one off the highway right there.
Uh, Gex, Denzy.
Wyler.
Wyler.
Klein Street.
Klein's a new one, though.
Okay, Klein.
That was redone, no, not a whole lot of years ago.
Yeah, that's too good time back.
Autobots.
It's still in.
Autobots. Yeah.
That one's almost a replacement because it's getting.
So bad.
It's, that's got base failure there.
That's why I, I'd put a star by for it today.
Uh, we went across Wind Drive.
Wind Drive.
This side.
Wind is another one, yeah.
And he said that would be another great street to overlay and then be able to save it.
What was that?
Wind Drive, one to the corner.
The curve in the very back? You talking about the top one or the bottom?
The top, oh, okay.
You could overlay that, and that's still gonna be okay.
Really?
All right.
Cause there's no, like I said, there's no base failure there.
All right.
That's one that was all of them chipped, though, isn't it?
No, the other side of Wind Drive.
Oh, the other side.
Well, I take that back. At one point in time, this one was.
Right.
I mean, we're talking, probably talking twenty, thirty years ago.
Are we talking all of Lynn, both sides, or just?
No, just the, uh, Four Street.
Okay.
You know, we could have north Lynn and south Lynn.
North Lynn and West Lynn.
Yeah, that's right.
It can't be north of that, I think, we would get there.
Well, yeah, we wouldn't worry about that.
What about like a Ridgeway?
We didn't go up and look at that one, but just, it's rough.
It's pretty rough. I think it gets a fair amount of traffic.
Right.
Yeah, there's a lot of traffic.
Ridgeway's very rough.
Well, that's why I say, you know, the amount of traffic and stuff needs to be taken into consideration, but. There's none any more dangerous, though, than Ninth Street in the mornings and when the school bus is let out.
Yeah.
Is the danger as a consequence of the condition or does, uh?
Both.
It's not why I know.
No, it's not.
I mean, the road pitches, it's humped and curved, there's almost no sidewalks, it's narrow, it's, that needs a major overhaul.
Yeah.
So, question again is, we gotta figure out how to make the best use of two hundred thousand dollars.
What do you recommend?
That would be, that would be a two hundred thousand dollar better project.
Yeah.
My personal opinion is overlay what we can overlay with. It'd get more bang for the buck and try to.
More coverage for the.
And try to save as many streets as we can from.
I'm all for if you can salvage something, get more, more years out of it. That, that would seem like a good way to go, to make it more people happy. You know, and prevent maybe further problems down the line.
So, we've mentioned the Four Street section between South Gavri and Market.
Third Street.
Third Street.
I think that's.
I think we need to do that. We were supposed to do that a while back. I think that'd be a good one. And I don't know how much that'd cost to do that, but I think it'd be a.
Well, we're, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna, you decide, we'll get the figures and bring it back to our meeting.
Let's get the figures on that one. And I agree with the, don't you all agree with the overlaying?
Yeah.
But it is going forward somehow, some way.
So how about Four Street from State Maintenance to Washington?
Are we, are we taking off the table of consideration about using any of the, uh, the capital improvement money?
I haven't brought it up, but yeah, you can, I, that's, that's.
That's part of the fire truck plan you had.
That's not part of the, that's not the two hundred dollars.
It's not part, it is, that's not part of the two hundred dollars.
Are there, I, I, you know, I'm new, so I don't know all the laws and regulations. Are there regulations on what we're allowed to use that money for? How is that earmarked? Is it designated for something? I don't wanna get in a situation where we're trying to use money for something.
We're advised that it can be used for any capital improvement. Can't be used to subsidize operating expenses.
Right.
It has to be a physical improvement with a economic life of, pick the period, but, you know, ten years. In this case, it'd be more like twenty.
Right.
Not thirty?
Well, you're not gonna get, that's, yeah, or thirty.
Okay, once again, we're gonna get the price on these.
So that opens up, I mean, that would be, could be seven, eight hundred thousand dollars, which could open up a lot more streets if you wanna consider that.
Guy don't wanna run that fund dry, though.
That's my point. I don't wanna bankrupt us either, doing it.
Oh.
No.
Oh, and that deserves.
Can you pick an amount to keep a safe cushion and then just?
Well, I agree with that. I just, you know.
Yeah, no, I agree. You don't wanna, you don't wanna.
The original discussion was, and the Corps of Engineers still hasn't given us our final report, that, that we needed five hundred thousand to reserve against possibly matching whatever work they're gonna do in the future. If that ever happens.
So where, where does that money come from?
It was raised by a tax. And it was voted for capital improvements at some point.
And that money still is coming in?
Money's in the bank.
But the tax is still in effect and still becoming a sales tax?
But, but the money that's been held in reserve was held in reserve against matching to, as a match, against core work that was gonna be done, anticipated on North and South Gavri Creeks. Which they have now said isn't going to be done. So they scaled down the scope of the work so that we don't need three million dollars.
To match.
To match it. And, and in the order of magnitude they gave us when we were having these discussions, it appeared that five hundred thousand would be sufficient to match the work that they were anticipating. That releases the other funds to be used for some other capital improvement purpose.
And the current tax is being used to retire the certificates of participation that will be paid off in two thousand and twenty-three? Probably five more years, I think.
Yeah.
Six more years. And anything excess of that goes into the capital improvements fund.
How did we pay for Porter Street in the past, or Westwood Drive, or?
Out of, uh, the same source of funds that I'm offering, it was a combination of the bridge and road tax and general revenue and fuel tax.
What happens to our rent payments from the Piva Building? Is it just going in general?
Everything we receive goes into general revenue unless it's a designated, a dedicated fund. So, uh, the park tax doesn't go into general revenue. The, it's, they're dedicated funds. Everything else goes into general revenue and is distributed across the needs of the city by your adoption of the budget. And the, these funds, the, the, the Bridge and Road are a dedicated fund. It has to be spent on the designated purpose.
But that's income that we never had before we purchased that building.
That is income we did not have before we purchased the building, and it goes into the general fund and is used based on your adoption of the budget.
And also to keep in mind is Chadwell. We're gonna be partnering with Chadwell. We're gonna, is, I know there's no, we're waiting on some information, you know, on what that's gonna, what that's gonna cost either.
Yeah, I think it's gonna cost. I think a grant total is gonna be around seventy thousand.
So that would come out of this two hundred thousand that you're talking, so that, that reduces that some any or more.
The money we could take out of the capital improvement.
Is there, does anybody have a compelling reason why we wouldn't use some of that capital improvement money from Dick's plan for the roads?
No, I'm, I'm just like the mayor. I don't wanna run it dry.
But it seems like there's money there that could definitely be used to improve our streets.
Right.
So I don't know why, I'm trying to look at both sides and trying to figure out if there's a reason why we wouldn't use some of that money.
Other than having a cushion, I can't see one.
Yeah, I'm not seeing one either.
It's always.
Fire truck.
Seems like, well, that's even outside of that.
Right.
That's a separate. It's always been the kind of top priority of the board, that streets was.
We take the money out for the fire truck, which was our, our decision, our earlier decision. We hold back to five hundred thousand dollars. You still got eight hundred thousand dollars available to spend on capital improvements.
And then what about this, the Corps' idea and the plan on this walking trail and everything up there on that levee?
That was.
We gotta match that?
That was still.
Well, it, it, we matched that at fifty percent.
Okay, but we don't know what that, what their, what that number is, though.
Well, I can.
I mean, the Corps has never.
What, what's, what's, what are they gonna do for a walking trail on top of the levee?
Pay the trail on top of the levee.
That was all part of that settlement, I guess.
There's a recreation element to the Corps of Engineers' design of the levee, and included a, a, a trail, a hiking biking trail, on top of the levee. And, 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 and the Corps was gonna spend federal dollars to do that, and it matches fifty percent on the recreational portion.
Wouldn't you say asphalt?
Well.
What are we talking? I said paving.
Paving, okay.
That's what it would be.
The whole roadway, well?
No, just a ten-foot wide.
Ten-foot wide. We had to have a ten-foot wide.
Then we can't.
Yeah, and the idea was, was the, the Corps doesn't have any money. They don't have an appropriation for any work in St. Genevieve. So the question was, can we do certain work out of dollars that, the dollars that are available to us that were being held to match the Corps' work? That would qualify, even though we spent it ahead of them doing the work, as our match. And, and, and they're supposed to be producing this final report that will enumerate those work items. And, and then we were gonna sign an agreement with them whereby. And, and then we were gonna sign an agreement with them whereby we spent money to do certain things, like the trail, with the, with the understanding that should the Corps ever be funded to do work in the city, that the money we already spent would be, it counted as match.
Sure. So when are they supposed to give you that?
Uh, last, uh, last fall.
So it's their usual level of expediency, then?
I have a my, my last correspondence, communication with the Corps of Engineers was before the end of the fiscal year, and their fiscal year is September first.
Yeah, okay.
So this 200,000 dollar amount, I mean, is there a timing over what can be spent? You know, the capital gains money or this 200,000 dollar money?
We have to spend this, well, I mean, no, I mean, you can, if we don't spend it, it just carries over to next year's budget.
Right, but I mean, is one more readily available?
No, to both, the, the 200,000, they're in the bank.
So the 200,000 now, let's go.
Gary, can we see, um, you know, it looks like you're out there looking at what, what can save with an overlay, let's see what we can do on some of those, and save as much as we can with overlays, get a cost, and, and then.
Well, again, we're not gonna do them all.
Right, no, no, I understand.
Purpose of tonight's discussion was to tell us.
Which ones?
What your priorities are. And then we'll price them out.
Did the 200,000 include the 70,000 for Special Road District?
No.
So the 70,000 for Special Road District could take care of Chadwell's, so you have 200,000 on top of that? We got nine minutes to decide.
I thi, I think Gary knows more than anyone else.
I was gonna ask that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you, you. I don't wanna. We, we can talk to you about what needs to be done from a technical point of view. The decision of what, what you want to be done then becomes a policy decision, because the worst need may not be your highest priority because of traffic and usage and service and, you know, whatever. What part of the city it's in, I mean, do we wanna do everything in one part of the city, or do we wanna try and spread the wealth? Those are, those are not.
I wouldn't wanna exclude any area, but.
Let's attack what needs to be attacked.
We have identified Third Street, we need to do something with that, we would need, been needing to do something with that.
Gary and I think Fourth Street.
I think.
Heavily traveled.
Fourth Street's important.
Hard-worn street right now, and that, that would be something that would be a great contribution to everyone who moves through the city.
Everybody who comes into the city, right.
And, or.
Travel.
Cavalcades the city from north to south.
Right. Which part of Fourth Street? The whole thing?
I would say from State Maintenance to at least Jefferson to Washington.
You know, I, I would go to Washington, I mean, I think the.
We're gonna go over that, from State, we're gonna go over that slurry seal?
Well, we don't have to.
We're gonna overlay over that, huh? Huh? It's not that bad. It's not bad.
I missed the question.
A little bit of overlay over the slurry.
Yeah.
Overlay over that slurry seal? It's not that bad.
It used to be really bad right out here.
Well, if we're gonna avoid the slurry seal, we'd start it, we'd go from Market to, to Washington, which is really, I guess you're saying, it's really the bad part.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, front, front stool there.
I'd say go from Market to, or from March, no, uh, yeah, Market.
Okay, next?
That's me.
Lynn?
Audubon?
Audubon's a, a, not an overlay.
No, that's a tear out, right?
Yeah, that's got a big smell here.
Okay.
But, but, yeah, that would be one, I don't know how many feet it is, but.
That's thirty.
Yeah.
You wanna see, I'll get pricing on Audubon, six inches of asphalt with appropriate base versus concrete?
Does Ridgeway qualify for overlay?
I do believe.
Ridgeway's pretty rough, and, you know, those, everybody who drops the kit off at Elementary drives up through there every morning.
The other thing to consider is, uh, a, uh, asphalt overlay doesn't necessarily require engineering. Concrete, remove and replace requires, requires engineering.
Do you have to what?
Which adds about ten percent to the cost of the project.
On overlay.
Yeah, what was your question?
Well, he said six inches on the asphalt.
That's a, that's a replacement.
On a complete replacement.
Okay.
You put six inches on top of eight inches.
And then you're gonna factor into all of this anywhere where there needs to be work done underneath it?
Utility?
Utility work, so that we're not digging up, six months from now, we're not cutting up a street that, I mean, I realize there's some stuff you're not gonna know, but obviously, anything that's obvious that you see needs to be factored into that, doesn't it?
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna.
I mean, why would you do it in that part of it, you gotta dig?
That's the time to fix it.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, that's what we did on Dirt, we had, we heard that, now we know we're more good, so we can make a.
Okay, now they need to work together on it, thanks, huh?
All right, so I got Third, Fourth, Lynn.
Audubon?
Audubon.
Redgway.
Redgway.
Well, that's a good start. Yeah.
All right, by your meeting, by your next meeting, we will have information talked in place. Now, Audubon, we're gonna do remove, and you want options of replacement, or?
Six-inch asphalt with.
Hey, Gary, are any of those, those dead industry, deck and all those, or, or any of those patch boards, they just need to be overlaid?
Oh.
Uh, we did some, some, pretty much patching on a deck last year, it helped, I think we can go back in and, and clean that one up.
Okay.
Because, you know, there's no big truck traffic through there. Probably the same way on Morrow.
Most of your streets over there, it's trash trucks are doing something.
Trash trucks.
They're on the side, you know.
They're on the gas, on the gas, they're on the brake.
There was a, right after I got here.
Yeah, right.
There were like eight different trash companies in town, and they were following each other down the street. We thought this is not good.
Gary, what about LaFleur?
Yeah, right.
Competition in the industry.
Gary, LaFleur?
Who care that for, is now there only three?
I would do an overlay on that one.
I'll have to do drains there, too, over to Gary. No water, when it rains, that water just sit in the dentists.
Well, that's, I think that's a MODAT issue. The, they have, they have a drain out in that yard.
Is that patchable, or just?
Is that LaFleur?
I'd do overlay on that.
Is that the street? There's a lady, the homeowner on the corner, talked to me about using, ditching her yard to, and that's Jean Rees-Over. They talked to me about ditching that yard to get that water off the street and into that sewer, that's north.
I know they did some locates out there recently, I understood MODAT was supposed to work on that.
Okay.
Because it's in the right of way.
Yeah.
Her problem is in the right of way.
Mm-hmm. Mark, I, you may have heard this, and I don't know if they mean anything anymore, but it was always said that there has been engineering done for the whole International Subdivision. It's supposed to be around here somewhere. Alderman Marmer, always brought that up. I don't know if any of that's any good anymore.
Well, let me look at it.
I don't know if they're any good anymore, but.
It was probably, how long ago was that done?
That's been a long time.
Thirty years?
Not that long. Mark, he was on board.
Well, then, twenty years it been?
Yeah, it might have been.
Well, eh, okay. Who did it?
Fourth, I, I don't know.
If that firm is still in business.
Is there a GoPro?
You could have a GoPro.
There is a GoPro.
Was that an engineering firm?
Yeah.
I think it might have been GoPro.
They did a lot of, good work there. And they are still in business, so they could update the plans instead of having to reinvent the wheel. All right.
Get you started?
Yep.
Five fifty-nine, we'll start over. We gotta do it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Griminger.
Here.
Alderman Rooney.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jopist.
Here.
Alderman Huck.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rusika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good, very good. I want to look at your agenda and make a motion to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Presentation is awards. I don't have any today, but I understand a congratulations is in order that Pam, I believe you're a new grandma?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Very good. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Not that she had anything to say.
Well, that's all right. And also, as we, we had a big group here, we're gonna have a lot of conversation. I want to remind everyone, the board, everyone in this room, to language. We don't want to have any follow language. I had a complaint. I did, I addressed it. We had a complaint about some, something that slipped out. I know it could happen, but just be mindful of that when you're speaking. I would surely appreciate that because it's on public television and we don't need to have that. Okay? Okay, so here we have a personal appearance. We have Jeanette Wood. Is she in the, here?
Yes.
Jeanette, do you want to stand up to the podium? We're gonna have a presentation to, you're from Riverwood Park, seeking permission to set off fireworks in the city limits.
That is correct. I've been here before. This, I think, is the fourth year that we've done that. Of course, we were up at the old building. We're now in the, out at Progress Parkway. I checked with Gary Nelson and the property directly across from where the facility is, is owned by the county and the community center. And that's where we'll shoot the fireworks off, over on that side. I'm gonna get a brush hogged off and everything, so there really isn't a place that we can do it on Riverview proper because we have to be very careful of the ball field and also the playing ground up, that's, you know, close to Progress Parkway.
And apartments, just.
Yes. That is correct. So, I don't know. Does anybody have any questions relevant to it?
Just one. Are we gonna be needing a road closure for that or anything?
Uh, no, because it will not be on the, somebody said, well, why don't you just do it on the road? I said, well, you can't, or shoot it across the road. You know, we'd be on our property and shoot them across the road, and I didn't feel like we could do that because, you know, sometimes those things fizzle out about halfway up and everything.
Do this on July 4th?
No, it will be on the 10th, which is a Monday.
Do you need to consult with the fire department, I guess?
Yes, I usually call them, particularly if we have a, if it's dry and stuff. Yes.
One issue that I had thought about and stuff was, just so we don't send the wrong impression that the apartment complex right next door, maybe we should post a sign there saying this is a publicly sponsored program. It's not okay to shoot fireworks in the city, but this has been approved by the city.
Okay.
Uh, just so they don't take off over there and start shooting a bunch of them.
Do you wish for me to do that, or should that come from?
I don't know, it's just an idea.
Okay. What's your pleasure, Ike?
I mean, these are gonna be fireworks like you see at a major firework display?
Well, it's certainly not the quantity or the amount of City Park or anything. That was another thing. We sit out on that solarium up at the old building and they had a front row seat of what the.
Who, who does it?
Uh, Bob Eisenbys, the maintenance guy.
But we're talking about more than like bottle rockets and sparklers, you know?
Correct.
This is a bigger.
But not big enough to require a license?
No.
And I think as far as Bob, your issue is, we're gonna be, it's gonna be July the 10th, you know, hopefully by then, things are calming down and we're way past 4th of July, so.
Just a precautionary suggestion, but.
Yeah.
I know, that's.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And Pam?
Yes.
There's a saying that if you have your grandkids first, that's better than having the kids.
Yep.
We have the St. Genevieve Chamber of Commerce would like to address the mayor and board about the 2017 Freedom Celebration and fireworks display. Dina? Seen a lot of Dina here lately.
Hello. So, we are doing the same thing with that. This is our 43rd year sponsoring the Freedom Celebration for St. Genevieve. And we kinda came to you guys last year and requested that we use the old tennis courts. And we'd like to do that again this year with the same reasoning because we're in between two turf fields. The school district put a lot of money into one, or actually in both of them, and we just don't want to take the chance of possibly having anything happen to those fields. So, we would like to utilize the tennis courts again this year. However, I do, did realize that you guys took away the fencing around one section of that, so we would have to use the section that is fenced in. There are still some tennis nets up that we would ask to be removed for the day, so we could utilize that.
No problem.
Yeah, things good on you.
I do have a couple of things from our firework company, actually, and I'll give this to Pam when I'm done because it's all of our licensing and insurance and stuff. But if we could get, if we could actually close the road from Yanks Parking Lot to the lower park entrance, it would really help us. Last year, we had some kids on some mopeds driving up through the grass and into, over by the fireworks and throwing stuff into the fence to our, our company that we hire. And so, it just ended up being, you know, a nuisance, really. So, we'd like to at least close the road for that time. The fire trucks did come down and block off the entrance at Yanks Park, or Yanks Parking Lot, and then we had barriers at the entrance, at the lower entrance of the park. So, we would like to do that again this year, just to kinda keep any of, you know, it's kids. We know that, oh, it's fireworks and stuff, and they want to come down, but it's just, it's too risky, especially once those, and we do six-inch bulbs that go into chutes, and so, once they're in the chute, it, anything can happen. So, if they're throwing, like, some kids last year drove by and shot roaming candles at us and it landed next to a chute that was already filled. So, that could have been, that could not have been safe.
Yeah.
So, we just want to take the precaution. We have our insurance policy. We've not had to use it, and I'd like to keep it that way. But, so if we could get the, either the park maintenance guys or even the, the police department for the day to just let us have that closure, that'd be great. And I'm asking for it from like 1:00 until the fireworks are done, because we start setting up at 1:00 PM up there.
Does the request have to come separate for the road closure or not? Or can we include that in on this?
I think you can.
I make a motion to approve with the road closure?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and, sorry. And if you are free on the 4th, that's when our fireworks will actually be. We are gonna kick off a patriotic celebration at noon on the county square, on the courthouse square. We will have the reading of the Declaration of Independence. Mayor will be our keynote speaker for the day, and then we will also be doing a dedication of the monument to the St. Gen Malise. So, that monument has been placed in front of my office, I guess probably two weeks ago. So, if you're, if you are available for the day, we would love to have you there.
And come here, come hear the mutie band before the fireworks.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Come hear the mutie band. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dina. The cannons. Have the city administrators report?
Okay, as the mayor suggested earlier, we're still waiting to hear from M.O.D. I called Paul Arnold with the Federal Road District, and he said, you know, that's just how the state is. They can do things kind of in their own schedule. So, if we don't hear something soon, I'm gonna start making phone calls to the district engineer and see if we can't rattle his cage a little bit. I don't usually cover the community service forum meeting, but at this last meeting and after our last regular meeting, there were more questions about spraying for mosquitoes. People complaining about the amount of mosquitoes. So, I, just to make sure, revisited the current state of the art for mosquito and still of the opinion, based on the research that is reviewable, that if you're gonna do this, you have to do a lot of things. And one is educate the people, which we try to do through our newsletter and Facebook and social media, about making sure you survey your property to ensure that you don't have standing water and breeding habitat mosquitoes. Secondly, is you need a citywide program where we, the staff, identify common areas where we may have standing water, and we put larvaicide in those areas because we can't bring them in order to, to prevent mosquito reproduction. And Gary and the staff do that. So, we got the first two legs of that. We're doing it. The third is a little more difficult. You have to have mosquito traps, and you set them out around the city, and you catch mosquitoes, and you have somebody qualified to look at the mosquito and determine its sex and, and estimate the populations. And if you have an area of high concentration, one that, with female mosquitoes, then you might want, as a last resort, they say, to the Department of Health, as a last resort to spray in that area. But nobody recommends community-wide spraying. And, and that's the same information we considered two years ago, when we said, you know, this isn't effective. And I haven't read anything in the last two weeks, since I, last week, since, since that, that had caused me to change my recommendation.
I agree with that 100%. Even, even just a soda can laying out in someone's backyard with a little bit of water in it can breed hundreds of mosquitoes out of that can over the course of the summer. So, everybody's gotta pay attention to where they've got water. And I don't want to be breathing in all those chemicals, anyway.
Alderman Griminger and I met with Linda Wagner. You will recall, perhaps some of you may not know about it, but there's a provision in the statute that allows the assessor to assess a lease. If the assessor determines that the lease rate from a public entity is lower than the rate that the market would otherwise require, she can tax the difference. And the St. Genevieve County Assessor has chosen to do that in the case of appeal. We knew about it, and we were gonna appeal it when they got their tax notice, but Piva didn't send their tax notice to us last year, so we didn't have that opportunity. But we do have that opportunity if we choose to do it this year. We have until the first week of July to file an appeal. The data that she's relying upon appears to be accurate to me. I went back and looked at the information that she provided us as far as what the current market lease rate is. But Alderman Griminger's calculation, and it took me like a long time to understand what he was talking about, is that if you apply the, the hurt figure as to what the lease value would be based on, on those comps, and compared it to what the tax revenue would be, if the building were being taxed as a privately-owned building, there's a huge difference. And, and sufficiently large that we think it's, it's unfair. So, she agreed after our meeting to take a look at that, consult with her advisors, and make a decision as to whether she's going to make some change. Should she say, no, we're gonna leave it the way it is, we have to decide whether we want to go before the state, the Board of Equalization, and we won't have another meeting before we have to make that decision. So, basically saying that should she come back with a negative response, we'll probably file the appeal unless you tell me tonight you don't think we should do that.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, what is the dollar amount?
The, the difference, but right now, the, the tax is $9,000?
$10,000.
$10,000? We're arguing that it should be, yeah, a third lower.
That's a pretty substantial amount of money.
Yeah, it's several thousand dollars. So, it's not breaking the bank one way or the other. And our agreement with Piva is, should this tax be imposed, because we didn't know she was gonna do it when we entered into the lease, that we would cover it out of our lease payments. So, so, we have to somehow reimburse them when they make their tax payment on this sweetheart lease. And the way we do it is, we just let them withhold it from a one-months payment. Okay. The, the mayor and I attended Lucy Winery Ribbon Cutting, and, and they opened up a new winery on Main Street. I would encourage you to stop by and see them. I thought it was very well, very well done.
Great.
You have a schedule here that Sue creates when she's putting together the budget, and I want you to notice the second August entry has a question mark. And that is for VOA workshop sessions with the directors over their budgets. And every year, we kind of ask you, how do you want to handle this? Do you want to do it by separate meetings? Or do you want to do it as a work session, like two or, we, we did three last year. We had two work sessions before our regular council meeting, and a third one at another time that you set. But Sue would like to kind of have an, have an idea of how you want to handle it this year. And again, that's the hearings with the directors. After I've met with them and we've put together a proposed budget for your consideration, you then look at each department.
I would like to see it somehow attached to a regular meeting by myself.
Okay, then we'll do two of those.
Well.
So, let's, we'll do that.
The last few years have worked out.
Yeah, we do. Well, it doesn't take, some of these, there are only a couple of budgets that take a while to look at.
Right.
You know, Steve's is probably one of the more complicated budgets, but we don't have any discretion. I mean, the, the money that comes in for water and sewer, it has to be spent for water and sewer, and we're not in the position, other than a few items, to say, no, you shouldn't fund that repair contingency, you know? We, I mean, so there are, you know, there, it's, it's not, it doesn't take that long to, to go through these. So, we'll, we'll schedule the two, and if that's, if we can't get it done, we'll schedule a third one before September, the 14th, the special meeting.
Okay.
All right?
I have a plan.
I mentioned to you the situation on the sales tax and, and whether it would apply to the downtown Tiff. I, I wrote that letter, and so, we've asked the county for favorable consideration on that, and I haven't heard back from them. Sandra will report to you on a meeting we had last night regarding tourism, visioning, visioning. It was a lively meeting, I thought, and I think some good things came out of that. Finally, what's not on here is, you recall the wasp on the camera at our last meeting? That was exciting. Jason Crump reported it was a lot more exciting at court than the next week. There was an infestation and it was, it was a problem. Judge was swatting. The, he called our pest control company, and they came and treated the outside of the building to prevent wasps from nesting. But there are these vents and slots, kind of in the space above the ceilings for airflow, that are inadequately screened. So, we can't keep bourbon from coming in and going out and nesting above the ceiling here, and that's what's happened with the, the wasps. We need to set off bug bombs up there. We will do that, but he said that won't do any good as long as we have these open vents. So, Gary and his staff went about the business of using fine mesh to lodge in the slits, these brick vents, all around the building, and they're gonna make some fine screen inserts for the larger grills that are on the back of the building. And, and that way, the wasps can't come in, and after we do that, Cameron will come in and we'll fog it, and, and we won't, won't have a wasp problem in the future, hopefully. That's the end of my report.
Thank you very much, Martin.
Thank you.
I want our staff reports. Eric?
Good evening.
Evening.
How are you?
Fine.
I don't have two chairmen to report. We are in the final stages of, of being able to extend an offer for our open position. Just finishing up some background investigations, and so, hopefully we'll have, have our person in place by, by sure fit and trained and ready to go. Have some, some decent candidates. We're, we're pleased that, that we're seeing, seeing the market turn around a little bit. I don't know.
Time to say speak up.
Speak up. All right. Does anybody have any specific questions?
Thank you. Sandra in the bill. I didn't see Sandra. There she is.
Hi, I'm back here.
Okay.
Good evening.
Standing behind you, Eric.
Okay, you have my report in front of you. I know it's gonna be a long evening this evening, so I'm just gonna really hit the high points. First of all, as Martin said, we held a meeting last night at the Welcome Center with several tourism-related businesses. We had a nice mix of some lodging establishments, some downtown shops. The chamber was represented. Martin and the mayor.
Historic properties.
Historic properties were present in our foundations. And we did kind of a, an overview of tourism. We did a little vision and strategy session in 2015. We talked about those projects, and then we talked about the ones that have been accomplished, and then we did some brainstorming on some of the things people would like to envision for the future. As you know, the national parks legislation was reintroduced into Congress last week. There was some excellent coverage in the Herald about that. You can read all about it. It's a really good detail. And so, one of the things that we talked about at that visioning meeting was really, you know, looking down the road, what do we see? What's this going to mean for us? And I'm sure there'll be discussions that you'll have on that same topic, but we kind of wanted to look at it from the perspective of tourism businesses in particular and what this can mean to them. And, you know, we talked about some marketing strategies and some things that we would like to see more of, like the types of activities specifically, and the types of things that we would like to see less of. And there were a few of those that came up, too. So, I'm actually writing up a summary of that. The other thing that under new business is that we recently revised the St. Genevieve Passport Program, working in conjunction with the historic sites and with the museum. Last weekend, I participated in the St. Louis Eclipse Expo. This was held at Greensfelder Recreation Complex at Queenie Park and was nine to five on a Saturday, and it was just lots and lots of people who were coming to get information about the eclipse, to learn more about it. And from what I saw, a lot of people are trying to decide where they're going to go to watch the eclipse. So, I tried to convince them, of course, to come to St. Genevieve to watch it. And so, we had a lot of really nice feedback about that. And I want to thank a young man named Jeremiah Coons for coming up and volunteering with me at the table. He's a 10-year-old here in our community, and he's very keen on science, and he wanted to help out. So, he was my little booth helper. We had a spin to win, and if you got a certain number, you got a free pair of eclipse glasses. So, thank you, Jeremiah. He was really great to work with. It's always nice to have some company when you do one of those things. Our St. Genevieve Eclipse website is up. It allows people to reserve their free viewing space, their parking space, purchase their eclipse glasses, purchase their shuttle for the parking shuttles, and just to learn more about the event in general. You can see that on visitstgen.com's website and also on our Facebook page for the St. Genevieve Solar Eclipse 2017. Our Saturdays in St. Gen program has kicked off with musicians, demonstrators, and people walking around greeting people and handing out information about St. Genevieve. So, we just are trying to create a little bit more on the streets, a little bit more to see when you come here. And that was one of the things talked about at that meeting last night. More of that kind of thing, more for people to see on the streets when they come here, to feel like there's a sense of excitement and activity on the streets when they get here to St. Genevieve. I have some notes there for you about some activities. You also have a full copy of the flyer about the 4th of July activities that Dina was just talking about. And then our statistics are there. Travel season is definitely upon us. We had over 2,500 visitors through the Welcome Center in May versus 1,725 in April. Of course, those numbers, May to May, were a little bit down because there was almost a week when you couldn't get to St. Genevieve from any direction except for one, and most people couldn't figure that out. So, our calendar year-to-date totals are at 6,891 versus last year, same month, 7177. So, we're within a couple hundred, and we're planning on making that up. We had a really strong French festival, beautiful weather, the ferry was running, and we had more activities, and did a lot more promoting of it on social media. So, that was really good. Interestingly enough, I got notes afterward from two of our historic properties, the Bull Duke and the Felix Valley. The Bull Duke had over 650 people through their property, and the Felix Valley had over 1,000. And at the Welcome Center, we had 281. So, I always tell you that it's usually a factor of about 20%, 25%. The Welcome Center is, you know, the tip of the iceberg. There's a lot more people out and about and around than the ones that come through the Welcome Center, and that was just a nice example of that. So, there, yes.
Did you comment on the reaction you got to reserving human spaces?
To reserving? Oh, so, yes, at the Eclipse Expo, you know, so these people are floating around, families, individuals floating around, trying to gather information about where to go to watch the event. One of the things that's different about our event is that you can reserve a four-foot by four-foot viewing space, and we have the whole area gritted out. There's no charge for that. We just want it to be organized so that if people are driving down the interstate and, you know, they're bogged down, they know when they get there, they've got spot C-35 and 36 or whatever. When I explained that to the people at the Eclipse Expo, it really had a lot of appeal for them because that's been one of their concerns. So, we hope that'll help us out. And right now, we have about 1,000 people registered, pre-registered, and then we've charted it out for 4,000, and then we have overflow capacity past that. So, I feel like we're probably right on track. You know, if we had this many people, we'd be happy. If we have 4,000, we'll be happy. We just don't know what to expect, but.
Over 10,000, we're gonna be unhappy.
We'll be overjoyed the next day. Right? So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah. Good evening, everyone. Happy to report the rotor is installed at the wastewater treatment plant. It went down back in December. Took 14 to 16 weeks to build. We had to get it delivered and installed. Treatment plant is working the way it is designed at this point. Robinwood Lift Station received some upgrades, new pump, rail system, so, and just under a year, that entire station's been rebuilt.
How many homes are on that road surface? How many users?
A number I don't know. Olive Triangle Drive, Industrial Park, and Robinwood. Waterline on Herzog Lane was replaced, and all services were tied over. Street departments already begin preparation of repairing, preparing the excavation sites. No known defects were visible. Smoke testing equipment will be available next week, and we'll begin that.
So what do you attribute that condition that happened to those people?
Well, at this point, I don't know. That's why we're still continuing.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you very much, Steve.
Thanks.
That's a good committee reports. After report, I got a call from Kathy Walts. She's resigned effective immediately from the TTC and the TAC Board. Talked to her a little bit about that, and she's just decided that she needs to step down. So there's going to be two placements. I'm going to have to appoint to that board. Was at the Levy Board meeting last week, and Tom Couch has resigned from the Levy Board. So they've asked me to look at some people and get some names and present somebody to their board, which I'm more than happy to do. And still need Park Board. We're still needing, I'm looking on my sheet, there's three members. We're short three people on our Park Board. Something, if you put it out there, all of you, if you know some people that are interested to be on some of these boards, we need people, you know. There's some criteria that they have to meet to be on these boards, but we should, we could sure use some help.
Criteria applies to the Tax Commission and the board. By the next, it's got to be a citizen.
Citizen, that's right. Anybody else on committees?
Oh, St. Gene TV's got a new look to their website. I would encourage everyone to check that out. Pretty neat.
It is.
Yep.
StgeneTV.com.
Yeah, I think so. I think Ed put it on the board out across the street.
Okay.
The website. Thank you.
Anybody else? Oh, we have public comments? Bob?
Bob, Brownie, 498 Murchison Street. I've been talking to the mayor and Carla about this problem of landlords that refuse to maintain the properties. And the one precisely I'm going to talk about tonight is Steve Wallin. He owns 14 pieces of property in town. He's bought the house next to me. Three landlords over the years. I've been begging them to fix their water problem that's eroding my foundation. Carla come over, and she's seen it. It's undermined that much dirt from my foundation, about 30 feet long. And this Steve Wallin, a year ago, he came out, and we both looked at it. And he goes, "Well, I'll be back in a day or two." I waited three or four days. No show, so I called him. I'm effing hog hunting. I'm not going to work on that house. That's part of that problem. Him and a group of people from Bloomsdale are bringing these guys in, and just backing up on police reports and other neighbors, to keep luring kids in, trying to get kids in their home, saying, "You want some candy? You want this? You want that?" And they won't stay, would not stop. I called Steve. He goes, "I don't, you know, I don't know these guys. I'm going to have to check into it." Well, he, him and the girl up on North Fifth were the ones that brought these guys here from Indiana. And they got three houses I know of in town with these type of people in it. So they moved from next door to me into one of Steve's other rentals. And then I think it's like an hour or hour and a half after they moved out, the house catches on fire. Okay? Steve will not fix the problem, and I'm going to end up losing part of my house because of that problem from that house. I've done everything I could do to remedy it on my side. I put a drain line in. I had old steps that went from my residence to that residence because 1934, that lot was part of my home. And they sold it to the clients, and the clients built that house. His water would come down onto them steps and shoot into, under my footing, the foundation. So I removed those steps. I've done everything I can. I can't do no more. Somebody has to help me out and force this guy to fix the dang problem. And he's buying all these ghetto houses in town for a purpose of just evaluating the people's property, and he's going in, offering cash money to buy their house next to him. Go look at the list of Steve Wallin's homes and see what I'm talking about. Precisely, you'll see. You'll say, "Wow, hmm, yeah, that's true." Please, I mean, I don't know what we can do. Buying them, but he will not fix my property. His problem, he will not do it. I need help. I mean, I'm losing my own.
So following you correctly, you're saying he's intentionally running the properties down to run out the other neighbors?
That's it, and then offering cash money for your own. Go look at, go look at the places he's getting. If you think I'm BSing, you just go look.
Is that it, Bob?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Now, on a note, I did talk to Steve today about your problem.
Yes, he told me that.
He told me that he would, within the next couple of days, identify and see what the problem is. He was going to correct it.
I appreciate that.
See what happens with it. And as far as rental properties, I talked to Carla about this because I asked, "Well, how many rental properties do we have in the city?" Between houses and trailers, just houses and trailers, we have 400 rental properties in the city. So something to be mindful of, that, you know, we watch it, you know, we follow the letter of the law to protect not only the people that rent the properties, but the homeowners around them, you know, and enforce our ordinances. Martin brought something to my attention. Back in 2005, we had an ordinance establishing rental house advisory commission and prescribing the duties thereof. And there's not a lot of information about this, other than this, there was a commission that was...
We're looking for new record. There were, but we haven't found in our files. Do you recall that group?
I do. I was on it for like two weeks. Me, Kathy Walts.
We have a list of the people. We just don't have, like, how many times you met and stuff like that.
I had to resign from it for work reasons. I didn't go to too many.
Well, there's a mention in minutes that there were recommendations that were going to be forwarded to the Board of Aldermen, but we can't find them. Don't know that that was done or not. It doesn't appear that it was done. I guess your question is, do you want to reconstitute the committee?
Yeah, we might revisit it, look at it.
Didn't we, didn't that establish some of the requirements as far as the inspections and all that go?
It had to.
Didn't that come out of that? Didn't it come out of that commission?
Kind of sounds familiar.
Yeah.
And I asked about the inspections when there's a rental turnover. They told me if it's...
Ed Luttrell was on there, too. I'm trying to think of who all was on the inspection.
You know, a couple of years ago, in response to landlord concerns, we amended our inspection procedures so that you don't have to get an inspection every time the occupancy doesn't turn over, you know. And I think that's helped. Ms. Marler's shaking her head, so I think it must have helped.
That was a good idea.
And I think we've done some things that have been helpful, where Carla's diligent on making sure that the properties are up to code. But understand, our codes are minimum standards. They aren't necessarily the way I would want it to be, but it's just that we're protecting public health and safety. So I think Bob's comments relate to that, that safety issue.
Well, for instance, down on Washington and Third, there's a trailer that's being worked on down there. The side of it's out, get right in underneath it. You have to see it when you go by it, you know.
I've spoken to Carla about it.
At least he's working on it.
Yeah.
It's better than the condition.
New windows, new windows, new doors. Efforts being made.
Any other public comments?
I'd rather see the city buy that, Derek.
Thank you very much. I'll look at the minutes from the meeting on June 8th, 2017.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. On the favor?
Aye.
Treasurer's report from June 2017. Second. On the favor?
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to the public hearing. The mayor and the board will hold a public hearing considering a request from Gene Shattuck for a special use permit that will allow guest lodging per Municipal Code, Chapter 405, zoning regulations, at 406 North Third Street. Property is currently located in a C4 neighborhood, commercial zone, district. Thank you very much, Gene.
Evening.
Hi. Okay, so just to present the evidence, the St. Genevieve Municipal Code, the staff reports that you have in front of you, the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, the comprehensive plan for the city of St. Genevieve. The planning and zoning record of vote recommended approval for this guest lodging, five, zero, and three absent. There are some terms or some conditions that we've requested be placed on this. Would you like me to read them, or do you want to go? Yeah? Bob, you want me to read them? Okay.
Am I the only one?
That's okay. All right. So 406 North Third Street, Gene Shattuck is requesting a special use permit to operate guest lodging in a C4 neighborhood district. The terms that we're requesting is prior to occupancy, the dwelling may not be occupied until any final building permits and the occupancy permit are issued. The occupancy permit shall be reviewed annually and shall include a property inspection under the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code. Occupancy inspections prior to each guest arrival are not required. Owners shall maintain a business license with the city of St. Genevieve under Municipal Code, Chapter 605, Business Licensing, Division 1, for lodging establishments. Owners shall provide, in a conspicuous location at all times, an operable ABC 10-pound fire extinguisher. Owners shall ensure that prior to each guest arrival, that exterior lighting at the front and rear doors are operable. No amplified music shall be played outside after 10:00 PM. Owners shall post in a conspicuous location within the dwelling the rules and conditions posted herein for guests to observe. It shall contain emergency telephone numbers of the owners, the police department, and the fire department. It shall include a copy of the current occupancy permit. The owner shall provide phone number and address of the city's building department for any complaints of the condition of the property or services provided incident to the guest stay. Owners shall provide empty and clean trash receptacles at the property on the first day of each booked guest period for guest use. Owners shall legally dispose of guest trash and recyclables within 24 hours of any guest departure. Legal disposal includes storage of accumulated trash in approved receptacles or containers in such a manner as not to create a nuisance. Trash receptacles shall not be placed at the street curb except on designated days by the solid waste hauler. Any signage advertising the special use of the property is permitted only after a certificate of appropriateness and a signed permit are issued. The applicant is to provide not less than one off-street parking space to use by guests per two sleeping rooms. Deliveries and/or use of large trucks should be limited to Monday through Saturday between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM. The exterior yard shall be maintained at all times. And the Planning and Zoning Administrator shall conduct an annual inspection of the property and submit a written board, written report to the Board of Aldermen regarding the compliance with the terms of the special use permit. And again, after the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the recommendation was for approval for this special use. Does anyone have any other questions?
So is this in the main building? How do you have it over?
Gene?
Yes, it will be in the...
Did you go to the microphone?
Thank you.
State your name.
Gene Shattuck, 406 North Third Street. The four guest bedrooms are in the old part of the house. There's an extension on the back that's newer. So it's in the west wing of the house. Four guest rooms plus two parlors and a dining room and a kitchen will be available for the guest use.
Is it your intent, you're going to still live in the back?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Is somebody certainly correct, this property has served as a bed breakfast in the past?
I've heard that. I don't, I don't know that. I believe it's true.
That's what I always heard when I owned it, but I...
That's what everybody always told me. But I don't know if that's true or not.
God, everybody's lived in that house.
Somebody said there was a vacant lot there, there was another one that was...
There was one next door to it. My wife told me it was, and I'm not going to argue with her.
Oh, no, no.
I can go back to every owner there was when I had me gone. I don't care. I remember being...
Oh, a stone house. Yeah. I'm excited that it went to Kenny's.
Well, it's great.
Okay. Motion to approve. Second. On the favor?
Aye. 646.
I make a motion to approve...
Yeah.
Based on the requests for a bed breakfast or requests for a special use permit.
Second.
That will allow guest lodging.
On the favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will be going back into public land. 647, we're going to talk about, consider the conditions under which the operation of utility vehicles may be allowed within the city limits of the city of St. Genevieve. Joe, you want to leave this out? We have, first of all, we have any public, anybody here opposed, disbarred or opposed that are here in the, in the audience?
Matt, you got to go up.
Tom?
Good evening, folks. I understand that there was talk about the possibility of UTVs being able to be in the city limits.
I'm for it. I kind of like to see it. Losing words here. I'll tell you what. I'm a little nervous right now talking. That's all right.
Do you own the...
I am, yes.
Describe it for us.
Okay. Mine is a Kawasaki Terex, it's called, and it's a side-by-side utility vehicle. The UTV comes from a utility, utility terrain vehicle, and it's used for off-road sport and for work, which is described, it has a bed on it that can be tilted in the back as to the others, like the razor-type vehicles, which are a sport vehicle, but they're beds...
Is that, is that being one of these? That was my concern about seeing, that was my concern at all. This type of vehicle.
These two are considered the razor-type, the more of the sport-type.
Yeah, considered very.
All the vehicles, they have roll cages on them, and they have seatbelts in them. All your util, or side-by-sides will usually come with seatbelts in them. I have them in mine, only I switched mine out to the four-point harness-type over-the-shoulder because we do all roll them a little bit. We don't get crazy out of it, but it's just a better safety feature. What I'd like to see is, I don't know, just to try to help it, you know, come together, if they would be required to have a blinker system on, I don't know, but... Okay, mine is a Kawasaki Terex, it's called, and it's a side-by-side utility vehicle. The UTV comes from a utility, utility terrain vehicle, and it's used for off-road sport and for work, which is described, it has a bed on it that can be tilted in the back. As to the others, like the razor-type vehicles, which are a sport vehicle, but they're beds...
Is that, is that being one of these? That was my concern about seeing, that was my concern at all. This type of vehicle?
These two are considered the razor-type, the more of the sport-type.
Okay.
Yeah, considered very.
All the vehicles, they have roll cages on them, and they have seatbelts in them. All, all your util, uh, your side-by-sides will usually come with seatbelts in them. I, I have them in mine, only I switched mine out to the four-point harness-type over-the-shoulder because we do all roll them a little bit. We don't get crazy, it's just better safety feature. What I'd like to see is, I don't know, just to try to help it, you know, come together, if they would be required to have a blinker system on, I don't know, but yes, they can be bought very cheaply through different products, you know, different companies. I'm all for the seatbelt. I mean, that's, if we're going to be able to use them on the streets as a vehicle, then some of the same things should apply as far as, you know, being able to wear a seatbelt. Helmets, I don't think so, because you're in a roll-caged system, and I know the golf carts, you don't have to wear them. But I don't, I would like to see it go through in any way that could help more on it. Ideas, I'll study it more on.
Have you heard of passengers?
Oh, yes, sir. On these utility vehicles, well, side-by-sides are two-seaters. They got a driver and a passenger seater, kind of like bucket seats, like.
Yeah, I have seen a second-row seating on some of them.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, they do make them, a four-seater also. The newer models coming out, they do have four-seaters in them.
But some of them, you can see it as many as six.
Yeah.
Right. The new wider.
My neighbor's got one of those in the... More questions for Tom?
I was trying to be more state prepared on this, but hopefully we'll get back next time.
That's our interpretation is what we're concerned about. I'm concerned about is what's going to be on the streets. Side-by-sides, I see it, and I know what that is, but I just don't want it to be generalized. We have everything and anything and everything running on the streets.
ATVs are the four-wheelers again, but they're considered a one-passenger type, you know, four-wheeler. Those are called all-terrain vehicles.
We want UTV.
Right, UTVs. Utility terrain vehicle. It's like a play-in work type. But I'll do some more studying on it. If you have any questions, please call me, and I'll try to get some more information for you, whatever.
Thank you very much, Bob.
What, what would you say the top speed on, just like one you got?
Okay. On, on the Tarex 750, Kawasaki Tarex 750, that's what I got, top speed is 49, is rated 49 and 50, but rather than, I tried getting it up on a straightaway one time on dirt, but it's, it's pushing, it starts struggling a little bit, so, but 30 miles an hour, which the speed limit basically here in 20. So at, at 20, for utility vehicle, I mean, that would be for in town here, you know. Oh, my other question is, M is a state, state road, I believe? I know I've seen the scooters on M and in town, well, within town, but then going on 61 one time. So how would you regulate if a person wanted to come down M Road or cross over a state road, say?
If they're out of the city, I don't think we have much regulatory power over that. I don't, I don't think the state allows scooters on roads like that, though.
Right.
I believe it's against state law.
So if someone's coming out of Valley Spring area with one, or, and come down M Road, that would be...
Basically, what you're saying is Valley Spring people don't have any way to get their UTVs into town without taking M Road.
Right. But, but they have scooters and come down, drive on M Road a lot, you know, and that. So I'm not trying to make a, you know, an argument or anything, just trying to see how something could be worked on there.
Bob?
Got a question for you, Tom. You had said you were in favor of this. I mean, what's the benefit, or is this just out of a convenience, or, I mean, what's your main reason?
Okay, it's more a convenience, I guess, and they are a little gas saver than the vehicle. But just, just more as a convenience, I suppose, and that the scooters are out there, and I'm not saying why not side-by-sides, but...
Right. Yeah, because the two pictures that Paul passed around, that's not my idea of a side-by-side. That's the razor-type.
Right, it's more of a...
Speed.
But not that I don't want to knock them out of the equation or nothing, but mine's just considered a sport, sport utility type. But, but if we are allowed to do that, well, then I myself, I'm going to consider it driving my vehicle, so, and I, and I would hope that, you know, others would, you know, consider the same way in order to keep it going, you know.
You're aware of the state's regulations on those where size does matter. The smaller units are titleable and registered, bigger units are not.
Right. So I, I know the county, you can ride county roads, and I know they have a sticker system every two years. I think it's $30, you have to pay the ride out of the county. I, I check with the county court, and I talk to those people. But now as far as city, I don't know if you require a sticker or anything like that. I don't know, I'm just kind of throwing these things out, so...
So the county does sticker?
Yes.
Do they inspect it before they give you the sticker, or do they just sell it to you?
No, sir.
Does the county inspect your vehicle before they issue the sticker?
That I do not know.
I jumped in here a little bit.
Come up to the podium.
Thank you. Matt Leonard?
Yeah.
I have the county sticker on my UTV. At the time I did it, 2013, they were only issuing those to ATVs, not UTVs, because utility vehicles under state law were already allowed on county roads. I don't know specifically now if they've changed where numbered roads are, were definitely out, but lettered roads in the county were okay, but state-maintained roads were not. And that's, that was the information I had at that time, and I did not renew that sticker simply because the UTVs didn't fall under what they were offering that sticker.
Could you describe your vehicle?
It's a Plaers Ranger Diesel. It's a pure utility. It's actually three seats wide, seatbelts for three people, rollover protection system, headlights, brake lights.
Turn indicator?
Does not have turn indicators. No, I'm not aware of any that come with turn indicators. But as stated earlier, they're, they're relatively inexpensive to add. It's not a complicated add if it was required.
Rearview mirrors?
I do have a rear, rearview mirror. It's not, it did not come with that. It's also something that's inexpensive to add. Rearview and side-view mirror should be added to all of them, and you know what's on that. I've been for this from the beginning. I've talked to Martin and, you know, others about this since this issue had actually, you know, been talked about. I actually live in the county, right on the city, city limits of the county. I work in town, my wife and my kids work in town, and we have school functions, band functions, we have two clubs that I'm involved with. We sponsor and participate in many events in town. Parents' Days, Halloween, we bring a tractor in and drive around town. I mean, there's, I live in the county, but I spend a lot of my life in the city. I mean, I'd even drive to work. So that's kind of where I'm at. We're outdoor people, and I, and many of the people that I see socially are outdoor people all over the county, they drive their UTVs around, they don't bring them to town because they're not allowed. We can drive to Magnolia Hollow, I drive to Bloomsdale. Once I get on the other side of the highway, we can drive to, I've been to Fredericktown to Menace. We've been all over on the county roads, but we don't drive in town because we're not allowed. I, I know there are a lot of people that would. I don't really know how much interest there's going to be once this gets out, but just the people I know socially, they say, well, you know, if we could bring them to town, we would. I think as it rolls on, there would be more people interested than are currently coming forward.
Now, whenever you said you went to Fredericktown and, well, Pike Olmwood and...
Mm-hmm.
How much time do you spend on any state roads like M Road or N?
B Road, probably a mile and a half on Menefin, and closer to, you know, closer to 32N, probably three-quarters of a mile.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah. Yeah, you can, you can pretty much, just on county and back roads, you can go from Terryville all the way around to Fredericktown.
Bob?
I'd be interested in seeing, you know, how you got this tag from the county and what their restrictions are, you know, as a precursor to...
It sounds like they have a lot of restrictions, you know.
They just sell them.
Just a sticker, sell them a sticker and go.
Yeah.
Where'd you get it at?
Port House.
Where? The clerk's office?
Right there, yes, yep. Yeah, I believe I had to show registration, insurance, and read the waiver and sign my name. That's pretty much the requirement they had at the time. Of course, that was...
But they're not regulated, right? You said the utility vehicles are not regulated even by, by the county?
That was for ATVs. I said, I don't know if they've changed that, but it was in 2013, it was for ATVs, in 2014, it was still just for ATVs, which is why I didn't spend the money again for something that didn't actually cover the vehicle I used, because the state said I could already use it on county roads. The city is where the stipulation is, you know, that it has to be an ordinance passed by the city and approved by the city to allow them in the municipality.
There's not any, in the outside the county, there's not any restrictions about time of day of use, or?
None that I'm aware of.
Like the Wild West, you can just kind of do whatever.
You know, according to state, if you're using it for work or for agriculture, you can still come through the city, but it has to be for a real purpose, not just for leisure.
Triangle on it.
Yeah, a flag and a, a small vehicle triangle.
Any other questions? Anybody in the audience that's got any public? Any else?
Thank you, thank you very much.
So, my name's Ed Moore. I live on Market Street. Obviously, when all these people come in from the county with these things that are capable, the new ones are capable of highway speed, obviously. His may not be, but a lot of them are. We have them where I work now, too. They, they go plenty fast with six people. The noise and, and the traffic we already have in town, I, I think they're going to be a problem. We already are having trouble regulating the speed through town to 25 mile-an-hour zones. I, I don't know how you're going to regulate all these that are, they're quite a bit different than a golf cart. Golf carts have governors, they're regulated to 20 miles an hour, they're much quieter. I think it's going to be a problem once they all come into town.
Question for anybody, do you see tax speedahiders in them?
Some do.
Yes.
Okay. They have to abide, do we have to abide by the same traffic laws anybody else?
Yeah, we're already doing... Much faster than people that do.
Our highway patrolman that lives just a couple doors down is saying people are doing 45 down Market Street already. So, way over the speed limit. That's my feelings on it.
Sure. Thank you very much, Ed.
Thank you.
So 8th Street going 25. What about Eric? Eric, excuse me. Eric, do you have any input on any of this, or?
I would like to see what the benefit is to the civilians or the citizens, other than recreation, if there's, if there's an actual benefit to the city or to the residents. I mean, it would, it would, so I could make more sense. I don't really see anything that's been introduced that makes it just apparent that we do this, but, I mean, again, the ones that are going to do it responsibly, I don't think it's an issue. Obviously, we wouldn't enforce any speed like you, like you mentioned, all the, all the Rosika, you know, there's, if we're exceeding the speed limit, we'll deal with that the way we would anybody else.
What about noise?
I mean... Noise and, and the aggressiveness with the tires, I mean, obviously, we just had a work session about the condition of our streets, and if we are talking about asphalt overlay as opposed to, to concrete.
I mean, obviously, the thing's got a loud muffler that makes too much noise, that person would get excited.
Correct.
Okay. I'm not pro or con one way or the other, I'm just asking just so everybody knows where we stand.
Well, following the discussion that we had on the scooters, is there anybody here who would want to introduce an ordinance?
Yeah, I would.
To do it?
Yeah.
It's more work.
You have to find a spot who's willing to support you on that.
I agree with Alderman Prince, I mean, this thing's got a lot more work to do, but there's a lot of issues, and like I said, with the state, the state titles the smaller ones, but when you get to a certain size, they don't title them.
That's odd.
Yeah, which is kind of...
It seemed like backwards.
Trust me, I went through it. I bought a used one in the state of Illinois, it was titled over there, and it took forever to get that title out of the previous owner's name. And it's because it's a certain size diesel. I just think it needs a lot more work.
I agree.
Well, I mean, we got to start somewhere, so I'm drawing up a proposal to look at. I mean, I'm in favor of, you know, supporting his sponsors, so...
Okay. Second. I'll draft an ordinance.
We need to come out of, close the public hearing. We're done closing the public hearing? Anybody else? Well, we're out.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
All right, Mr. Kerry? Takes us to old business. We're going to be, have the second reading on bill number 4159.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Forces program and the St. Genevieve Police Department in an amount not to exceed $25,000. Second reading.
Motion to approve. Second? Take a roll call vote.
Alderman Grimminger?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
No.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, zero absent. Bill number 4159 now becomes ordinance 4098.
Very good. Look at bill number 4163, second reading.
An ordinance approving a bid proposal from Centennial Emergency Solutions, Arnold, Missouri, for the purchase of a MSA confined space supplied air system in an amount not to exceed $12,417.67, and amending the rural fire department budget number 60.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's the first read?
That was second.
That was the second reading, I'm sorry.
Roll call. Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yeah.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Grimminger?
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4163 now becomes ordinance 4099.
There you go. Takes us to new business, bill number 4164, first reading. Can I read that?
An ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending chapter 210 offenses, article 11, offenses concerning minors, section 210.600, parental responsibility of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code as set forth below.
Have the people in the audience, they have seen this ordinance? The ones that, from the school district? Okay.
I emailed it to...
Okay. Are they happy with it?
Y'all seen it?
Yes, and I've worn it on to the rest of the...
Come to the podium?
Mayor, are they happy with this, or?
That's what we're going to ask. What is your, you're reading the ordinance, is this what you're looking for, or?
I, I think it is what we're looking for. Do you guys all agree after reading it? The only thing that I wanted to point out to Mr. Elpers as far as what I thought may be missing from the ordinance, what might be important, was part of the state statute, the state statute says between the ages of seven and 17, that the parent or guardian is responsible for the child's education. But part of the state statute says, let me find it here, that any parent, guardian, or other person who enrolls a child between the ages of five and seven years in a public school program of academic instruction shall cause such child to attend the academic program on a regular basis, according to this section. And that is my interpretation of what the state statute is saying is, and there's another part of the state statute before I say anything on that. Another part of the state statute basically says that a child, oh, I don't know what's in here, a child between five and seven years of age shall be excused from attendance at... in here, a child between five and seven years of age shall be excused from attendance at school if a parent, guardian, or other persons have charged control or custody of the child, makes a written request that the child be dropped from the school's roles. So that part is, was in the ordinance that was drafted up, but the other part that states that the parent or guardian has to provide that education between five and seven if they're enrolled is not in the ordinance. And I, I think that may be important because the case that I was, one of the cases I was kind of talking about when we last met was one of our cases at the elementary with a five-year-old. And when I went ahead and typed the report up and sent it over to Carl, I did it based on the part of the state statute that says because she is five and she is enrolled in school and mom has not provided the school with a letter stating, you know, that she wants to unenroll her, that she still is responsible for her education. So that's what I went ahead and sent down to him.
I don't quite understand what she's responsible for. I know you say her education, but are you-
Like maintaining regular school attendance.
But if she's not enrolled in school?
She is enrolled in school.
No, I'm going by this, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can take your child out of school if you want to.
With a written letter?
With a written letter. Then you can come out of school. I mean, they don't have to go to school until they're eight years old, correct?
Seven.
It says the child between five and seven years of age. That would be eight years old before they go to school. It could possibly be eight years old.
Well, um, let me find part of the state statute. Part of this state statute talks about how the parent, guardian, and other person in the state having charge, control, or custody of a child between the ages of seven years of age and the compulsory attendance age, which is 17. So they have to go to school starting from seven to 17.
Bob, you got a question, Donner?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You know, the defining of this and stuff, I mean, are we only talking about people who live within the city limits?
I think that's kind of what we talked about last time, was the conflict that's there with where does the incident occur at? And like I had said last time, the prosecutor, his view on it is the incident takes place at the school. And that's where, you know, so, you know, I'm not commissioned with county, so if we have an issue at Bloomsdale School where a kid is not going to school, then I may do phone calls or visits and do all of that stuff, but if it's something where we feel like this kid is continuing not to go to school, and we may look at charging the parent or the guardian, then I get county involved and the deputies will take it over. But when it's city, then, you know, all the schools here in town. So his, his perspective is it takes place in the city or at the school. And I think Mr. Elpers' perspective is that it takes place at home. So it would be, I guess, wherever that person resides at.
We're not shifting responsibility from the county to the city then?
No. And I, and I think when Mr. Elpers and I had talked, that if, if this goes into place, that we would only use the citation like what he is saying. We would only use the citations for people who are residing in the city. And then if it were, you know, a situation where the parents lived in Bloomsdale, but the kid went to the middle school here in town, then I could always run the case through state instead of using this ordinance.
Randy?
So then, Bob, that, that issue aside, going back to the first item that you addressed, which was to do with the ages?
Yes.
If I'm understanding you correctly, your concern is that in some language it says ages five, and then in some it says ages seven? Is that correct? Was that your concern or?
My concern is that, I don't know if you guys have the state statute that I had made copies of for you last time, but under that state statute, there's one part in there that states, basically, you know, if we have a child in our preschool program or kindergarten program, more of our kindergarten program, they're gonna be, you know, five years old usually. And so, this situation at our elementary school that we have with this little girl who's missed 40-something days is five years old. Well, the law states that, you know, her ma, she, she was raised by her mom, that her mom has to provide this education for her between the ages of seven and 17, according to the state statute. But then the state statute mentions in there, but if the child between the ages of five and seven, if they are enrolled in an academic program, that the parents basically have to continue to provide that education for them if they're enrolled in a program unless they write a letter to the school stating that they want to unenroll that child.
And I grasp that. I suppose what I'm getting at is, to simplify this as much as possible, can we just amend this or do we need, I mean, I don't even know that we're going along with, but I'm just saying, can we, does this have to be rewritten or where do we stand with this?
I'm not sure what you want rewritten.
Well, I don't know. She's concerned about the age limitations, and I'm just asking, you know.
My thing is if I get, and I, and I, you know, I can, I can always run it through state, but my thing is, is if I get another child who is five years old, and we have made, exhausted all of our efforts that I talked to you guys about last time, and the child's up to 25, 30 days or whatever, because they're five years old, I'm not going to be able to write it under the city ordinance, because the city ordinance basically states in here that the ages are between seven and 17.
We need to rewrite it to include the five. That's from five, that was my point.
Well, we're adopted with the amendment, which will be reflected at second reading.
Let me take a look at that. Assuming that the five while enrolled is in the state statute, then, then when it comes back for a second read, I'll, I'll have an amendment to it that touches that. Yeah, most of this is taken out of the state statute. And I'm not gonna guarantee you that the state statute's consistent all the time.
Right.
But I think the state statute says that you have to put your kid in school between seven and 17. You have to enroll. And then if they voluntarily enroll them, let's say, at the earliest enrollment date, which happens to be younger than seven, then there's a kickout provision here that says that a parent can write a letter and say that they want to do kindergarten or first grade work at home.
Well, so-
So I guess it's kind of a gotcha, if you enroll your child at age six and don't unenroll them, then this ordinance could punish you for, for not having regular attendance.
That's a good-
That may or, yeah, that may or may not be what you, what you want to do. And folks, remember that what we're trying to do is shorten the time when these non-attendances occur and keep maybe certain state agencies out of people's face and get their attention in front of Judge Hughes' camp instead of having it go through the juvenile office, Division of Family Services and all that. All of that stuff is actually still going on parallel, but if somehow the efforts of the municipal court can resolve the problem, then I think it's a, it's a social good that helps, it's a win-win, because you kept DFS out of the parents' home.
So if we want to do this, what is the appropriate course of action here? Thank you.
Well, what would happen is the-
With the revision of the-
The city police department would issue a citation. See, this thing even talks about more than just non-attendance. This, this ordinance talks about whenever a minor shall be arrested or detained for the commission of any criminal act within the city, the police department shall deliver a notice to the minor's parents.
Right.
So if you've got a minor that's chucking rocks at the neighbor, instead of going through the ju, you can go through the juvenile office, but the parents can say, hey, look, take care of your kid.
Right.
And so this, this whole ordinance was actually on the books, but it had never been adopted. So we reworked it and pulled in the school attendance piece. But this is directed at parents who are allowing their child either-
Who are not married.
To commit a crime. And we put them on notice and make them come to, come to Judge Hughes' camp and explain what, what are you doing to try to control your child? And then it'll also include a diver, call it a diversion from the state process and get the parents to unit court quicker.
Sure. And I understand all that. I'm just saying, do we want to table it and have it rewritten? Is that the best way?
Well, you got to tell the school year starts. I think you-
Well, I know. I'm just saying, what's the cleanest way?
You can have a first reading.
Yeah. Let's do a first reading, and then we can change it, amend it.
Okay.
I'm making motion on the first read.
Can I ask her a question?
You can't.
Officer Clark, just, I don't know, when we talked the last time, what role does Division of Family Services have in this? I mean, they seem like they have more power than like the Supreme Court in most cases that, I mean, as far as taking kids from families or whatever. I mean, they get involved in this, this whole thing?
Yes. Yes, at some, yes. Every time that, before I send anything down to the prosecutor, that is always one of the things we check off of our list as, you know, an effort to make. They, I, I worked for the children's division a long time ago for six years, and they really don't have the power that a lot of people think. I mean, legally, they can't take custody of a child. You know, only law enforcement and a physician or the juvenile system can take custody of a child. And so if, if they're in a situation where they think the child needs to be taken into care, foster care or whatnot, then, you know, we sign, you know, a form or they request something for the juvenile office. So they really don't have as much power as a lot of people think, but we do get them involved and we do hotline it after we, that is, I would say that's the next to last thing that I do. Besides, like I said, we send, we make phone calls and letters go out, home visits, we have meetings at the school. But yeah, that is like the next thing that we will do.
And then they'd be obligated to hotline it even if the parents are charged. They're, if they, if they have reasonable cause to believe, and then juvenile office will review it, and then they'll take their own independent action at the state level. And then DFS comes in only if there's been an adjudication that the child has been neglected or abused. So we're coming in at a different angle. We're not prosecuting at unit court, abuse and neglect. We're prosecuting, you haven't been going to school. And so my burden is gonna be relatively low, but at the same time, if there is abuse and neglect, you still got to hotline it.
Correct. And I will say that, you know, the children's division can offer more services than what the school can offer. You know, they can get in with the family and go in there on a regular basis and set them up with parenting classes or dark treatment or whatever may, because, you know, there's usually underlying issues that are going on with the family that need to be looked into. So sometimes, you know, I will hotline it and the children's division will get involved. They'll open up a case and start working with the family, and things may change, and it never goes down to the prosecutor's office.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rick, you made a motion or?
Yeah, Rick.
I also made a-
What was it again?
For the first reading.
For what the amendment?
For the first reading.
Okay, ah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, seven. You have, uh, other business? We're, temporary liquor license for the American Legion Riders are requesting a temporary liquor license for Georgia Fett, Saturday, August 12th, 2017, and Sunday, August 13th, for the Moses Austin property?
Prove to prove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have a demolition permit request by Donna Marler, who's here, is requesting a demolition permit to demolish the shed at 363 St. Mary's Road. Carla?
Donna Marler has requested that the shed located in the, on the property at 363 St. Mary's Road be demolished. It was taken to the Heritage Commission because it is in the historic district. The Heritage Commission has requested, they gave a 4-0-1 absent vote to approve the demolition. So the next step is to come to the Board of Aldermen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
We have another one, a temporary liquor license for the St. Genevieve Parish for their annual picnic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would like to go into closed session for lease and personnel, contracts and personnel.
There you go.
Motion's go into closed session?
Second.
Is there a motion in second? Can I roll call?
Alderman Grimminger?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi? Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika?
Yes.